Jesse Fenton.
Here.
Jesse Dodge.
Here.
Jesse Calandrello.
Here.
Jesse Healy.
Here.
Jesse Getzinas.
Here.
Jesse Malani.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise to the plate. I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of March 15th, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Fenton.
We've approved the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of March 15th, 2021.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Accounts payable from March 16th, 2021 through April 5th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Healy. I move to approve the accounts payable from March 16th, 2021 through April 5th, 2021 in the amount of $2,894,942.30.
Second. Call the roll.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item A, payroll from March 19th, 2021 approval. Item B, mini skid steer excavator loader and mini asphalt roller purchase and delivery. Item C, Dell desktop computer equipment. Item D, Centennial Park West concert series stage sound and labor. Item E, authorization of the sale of one police vehicle to Village of Phoenix, Illinois.
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Malani.
Move to approve items A through E of the consent agenda.
Call the roll.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
And Mayor Pico.
Aye.
This is a public hearing in regard to Orland Park Special Service Area Number Seven, providing the maintenance, repair, reconstruction, and/or replacement of the landscaping areas lighting, including lighting fixtures and poles in the roundabout on and along 169th Place facilities in the event that the owner of the subject property fails to maintain, repair, reconstruct, and/or replace said facilities as required by various agreements. The introduction to this, the authority, the public hearing is being held pursuant to the ordinance passed by the President and Board of Trustees on March 15th, 2021. Said ordinance being entitled an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number seven in the Village of Orland Park and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith. Notices were pursuant to Section Three of the aforementioned ordinance. Notice of this public hearing in the form set forth in Section Six of the aforementioned ordinance was given as follows. Publication of said notice in the Daily Southtown Newspaper on March 21st, 2021. Mailing said notice to the real estate tax SSE for each parcel of property located within the proposed special service area on March 17th, 2021.
And for an explanation, a description of the project, the purpose of the formation of the Orland Park Special Service Area Number Seven is to fund the Village of Orland Park's costs of maintaining, repairing, reconstructing, and/or replacing the landscape areas, lighting, including light fixtures and poles, and the roundabout on and along 169th Place, referred to as the facilities, in the event that the owner of the subject property fails to maintain, repair, reconstruct, and/or replace said facilities as required by the development agreement between the Village of Orland Park, OPR Homes LLC, and SSM Healthcare Corporation, the declaration of easements, covenants, and restrictions in the final plat of subdivision for the Orland Ridge subdivision. An explanation of the financing per the terms of the special service area, a tax levy at a rate not to exceed $1 per $100 of equalized assessed valuation of property in special service area number seven for each year during which the Village of Orland Park is required to expend funds relative to said special services.
Are there any questions or comments? Anybody from the audience? Any questions or comments from the board?
Mayor Pico.
Jesse Dodge.
Ed, tell me again why we're doing this? I get the mechanics. It's a special service area, but why?
The reason we're setting this up is in the instance that there are portions of this project that are not, the developer fails to maintain in the future or overarching association fails to maintain in the future, then the village will call upon this to make the improvements that the developer has decided not to, and we would use this as a funding mechanism to fund only those improvements necessary.
How have we handled things like this in the past?
In the past, they've been, there's multiple ways that we have set up dormant SSAs in the past for some commercial properties, but typically what happens is if the homeowners association or business association collapses, then the village has to step in and upfront that cost to make these improvements.
Why wouldn't we just pull letters of credit?
This is after the letter of credit would have been returned to the developer and the development is further along and it's, I guess, towards occupancy.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call the roll. I'm sorry. Need to entertain a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second. Call the roll.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 5601 entitled an ordinance establishing Village of Orland Park Special Service Area Number Seven.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico. Public hearing Villas of Cobblestone.
I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
I'll call this meeting to order this a public hearing in regard to Orland Park Special Service Area Number Eight, providing for maintenance, repair, reconstruction, and/or replacement of the detention pond and retaining wall on Outlet A in the park on Outlet B in the event that the owner of Outlet A and B fails to maintain, repair, reconstruct, and/or replace said facilities as required by various agreements. The authority is this public hearing is being held pursuant to an ordinance passed by the President and Board of Trustees on March 15th, 2021. Said ordinance being entitled an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number eight in the Village of Orland Park and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith. Notices pursuant to Section Three of the aforementioned ordinance. Notice of this public hearing in the form set forth in Section Six of the aforementioned ordinance was given as follows. Publication of said notice in the Daily Southtown Newspaper on March 21st, 2021. Mailing a notice to the real estate tax SSE for each parcel of property located within the proposed special service area on March 17th, 2021.
And a description of this project, the purpose of the formation of the Orland Park Special Service Area Number Eight is to fund the Village of Orland Park's costs of maintaining, repairing, reconstructing, and/or replacing of the detention pond and retaining wall on Outlet A and the park on Outlet B and forth as the facilities, in the event that the owner of Outlet A and Outlet B fails to maintain, repair, reconstruct, and/or replace said facilities as required by the development agreement between the Village of Orland Park and the Villas of Cobblestone LLC, the declaration of easements, covenants, and restrictions, and the final plat of subdivision for Villas of Cobblestone subdivision. An explanation of the financing method for the project and the special service area financing, a tax levy at a rate not to exceed $1 per $100 of equalized assessed valuation of the property in special service area number eight for each year during which the Village of Orland Park is required to expend funds relative to the special services.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Comments from the board? Mayor Pico.
Jesse Dodge.
Ed, how's the policy coming balancing out all the costs and expenditures around ponds and special service areas and existing ponds and new ponds?
We're still working on it, but we're putting together some information to bring back to the board.
Glad to know it's moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 5602 entitled an ordinance establishing Village of Orland Park Special Service Area Number Eight.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge. Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Mayor Pico. Allen I Route 43 Streetlight Bidding Award.
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Fenton.
Move to approve awarding ITB 21-016 Illinois Route 43 Harlem Avenue, whoops. Did I see your, my computer just went blank. Lighting to Edward Electric Company of Orland Park, Illinois in the amount of $542,676.30 plus $37,323.70 contingency for a total not to exceed $580,000.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico. 2021 Neighborhood Road Improvement Program.
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Fenton.
Move to approve awarding ITB 21-018 2021 Neighborhood Road Improvement Program to Austin Tyler Construction of Elwood, Illinois in the amount of $6,396,516.85 plus $120,000 in contingency for a total not to exceed the amount of $6,516,516.85.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico. Resolution to support, support 143rd Street widening.
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Malani.
That was Jesse Healy.
Jesse Healy.
Oops. Oh, Jesse Healy.
I move to approve, can I have a resolution number, John?
Two one one one.
Two one one one. I move to approve resolution number two one 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 entitled Resolution Supporting a Project for the Widening of 143rd Street and Encouraging the Federal Government and the Illinois Department of Transportation to Support the Project.
Second. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Jesse Calandrello.
Just want to, I know that we do a lot of future work and for our projects, the Grange Road, a lot of different projects. I appreciate this. We definitely need to get this road done hopefully before my kids are able to drive in 10, 15 years. And I know that it's good to tell the federal government where we could spend some money. I know this talks about another transportation plan and about $13.2 billion in Illinois, so maybe we'll be able to get some of that money for 143rd if it passes. So it's always good to tell the people in charge where we need the money, so I appreciate the ones out there.
Any other comments? And just so everyone knows, this was actually a request from Congressman Newman to put this resolution out there to help her get that support, so. Call the roll.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Mayor Pico. 82 Orland Square Drive, Class 7C Resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Healy.
John, can I have a resolution number?
Two one one two.
I move to approve resolution number two one one two entitled A Resolution Supporting and Consenting to a Cook County Class 7C Real Estate Tax Assessment Classification for the property at 82 Orland Square Drive in the Village of Orland Park.
Any comments? I think this is a great, great use, medical office going into that property, so, you know, we're fully supportive of anything that helps these businesses get in, into these properties. Call the roll.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico. Veterans Tuesdays in the Park.
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Malani.
I move to approve hosting Veterans Tuesdays in the Park, featuring entertainment, food, and military displays to honor all veterans with special salutes to World War II, Korean War, Vietnam War, and Gulf War veterans on June 1st, June 15th, July 6th, and July 21st, 2021.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Malani.
Firstly, I'd like to thank Darrell for, you know, everything and working on this and the Veterans Commission to bring this program forward, and, you know, we continue to support the veterans in Orland Park as well as all of the veterans, so using a perfect location in front of the Arapachee Memorial is a great idea for this, so I'm happy to see this and thank you for putting the work.
Thank you very much, Jesse and Mayor.
And Darrell, do you want to just give us a quick overview?
A quick overview. The Orland Park Veterans Commission wishes to provide an opportunity for veterans, their families, and widows to enjoy camaraderie, free entertainment, and activities in a relaxed social setting outdoors during the summer. As such, the Commission proposes hosting Veterans Tuesday in the Park, June 1st, June 15th, July 6th, and July 20th, 2021. Each night will feature a theme, including a salute to all veterans on June 1st, a salute to World War II and Korean veterans on June 15th, a salute to Vietnam veterans on July 6th, and a salute to Gulf War veterans on July 20th. The location, as mentioned, will be outside the Civic Center, outside by the Arapachee. Each night will feature a band, food trucks, military vehicles, military collectors' displays, and booths with Veterans Commission members to welcome attendees.
Any other comments? Darrell, I think this was a great idea and happy to support it.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Pico. Subrogation of Claims Addendum to Service Agreement with CCMSI.
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Malani.
Move to approve an addendum to the service agreement with Cannon-Cochran Management Services Incorporated to incorporate auto physical damage claims administration services on behalf of the village and authorize the village manager to execute an addendum to the service agreement with Cannon-Cochran Management Services Incorporated to incorporate auto physical damage claims administration services on behalf of the village, subject to attorney
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello. Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Pico. Deferred Compensation Investment Management Consulting Services.
Mr. Chairman.
Jesse Healy.
I move to authorize the execution of a three-year agreement with Wells Fargo Advisors to provide defined benefit investment consulting and co-fiduciary services, and to authorize the village manager to execute a professional services agreement with Wells Fargo Advisors for a deferred compensation investment management consulting services, and to authorize the village manager to establish a five-member employee deferred compensation plan committee consisting of the village manager or designee, the finance director or designee, the human resource director or designee, and two village employees nominated by mutual agreement of the recognized employee organizations in the village.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Jesse Healy.
Aye.
Jesse Malani.
Aye.
Jesse Fenton.
Aye.
Jesse Dodge.
Aye.
Jesse Calandrello.
Aye.
Jesse Getzinas.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
A reminder to all of the non-scheduled visitors that are speaking, you have three minutes. Start with Max Schuman.
Can I take this off? I'm the, and have been the Jersey Mike subs franchisee owner for 10 years here in, actually a little bit shy of 10 years, it'll be 10 years June 22nd of this year. We've really enjoyed the time here. It was our first restaurant, and very proud to say that we now own 23 locations, all really because of the foundation that was built here, where we never would have built store number two, which is in New Lenox, and then we didn't, went to Frankfurt, et cetera, et cetera. The reason I'm here, pardon me, is to just register a concern for the amount of congestion that has most recently accelerated. I think one of your folks up front mentioned that we had our Day of Giving this past Wednesday, where 100% of the sales in every Jersey Mike's nationwide go to named charities by DMAs like Chicago and different communities, right? We had customers that called us that wanted to participate in that, but after 10 to 15 minutes waiting to try and get on the property, they gave up. And I'm not blaming anybody for this at all. I just would like the city to take a close look at this. I've been in the restaurant business over 45 years, and many, much of that time has been with drive-through operations and backups into, you know, roadways and things like that. I think that, and what the landlord has suggested we look at as well as myself, is a different way that traffic can get on and off the parking lot. Our customers are just one of, I think we have five tenants in next building there, they are encumbered because of the accelerated business that Chick-fil-A has generated, to their credit, but we can't get on the lot. I couldn't even get on the lot a couple of times myself because the exit is blocked with people trying to exit, and the entrance could be as long as 20 cars to get on the lot. So we have employees that work for us that have to park at Lowe's and walk across the street. We've talked to Lowe's and Lowe's is okay with that, but we have people that, you know, customers that aren't going to do that. They're not going to park someplace else, walk across a roadway to come to our business. I have no way of really estimating what this has cost us in business, but I do know it is a material impact. So all I am asking as a tenant is that this be looked at in more depth, or maybe a camera be there. We've had two physical altercations of people outside of cars pushing and shoving each other in the last probably three or four months. We just can't have that, so if you would, we would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Ayaz. I'm the franchisee of Smoothie King here in Orland Park on 156th and La Grange. I thought it was a great idea to bring in a healthy option around here to Orland Park, the closest other smoothie places, pretty far. It was pretty good until coronavirus came and Chick-fil-, you know, everybody had to close and Chick-fil-A had, you know, their lines kept getting pretty long. Over the, we've been only open for three months, so I don't, three, sorry, four months, and so I don't know how much money I'm losing, but I do know a lot of my customers are coming in complaining that they've been standing 10 minutes in their lines. I know they suggested a new, a new drive-through situation where it would speed up the process, and I'm just asking for us to keep an eye on if it helps or not. If it doesn't, I'd like to come back and, you know, adjust the concerns, because there has been a couple of fights. I did call the police, probably, I think this was in February, because there was a big fight over someone trying to leave and someone coming in through the exit. Nobody would move, so it kind of caused a little congestion. I don't know if the police came and helped everything, but everything would turn out to be fine, but I don't like for it to happen again, because, you know, obviously it does reflect poorly on our business and businesses. So, I mean, that's pretty much it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Nikola Pachovic. I'm the representative of the owner, as my mom, of the plaza that Jersey Mike and Smoothie King is at. In addition to them, I have a corporate Red Wings and a T-Mobile store, and for a total of six stores, of which everyone's complained of their lack of access to the property, or the ability of their customers to get in, particularly during peak hours. And, you know, insofar as that, another ingress egress would perhaps help. Maybe their plan will also help, I'm not sure, but widening maybe of the ingress egress would help, maybe two avenues coming in and one coming out would help immediately, I was thinking. And in addition to that, you know, there's a large amount of refuse being generated by the customers from Chick-fil-A. They have really no respect for the boundaries between our lots. They feel free to leave the drive-through and park basically 10 at a time in the back into my lot and throw out all their garbage after they finish consuming their food. Because of that, I've had to incur more camp cost for the tenants, because they have to hire more people to come and police the lot, you know, of the garbage that's not being generated by the customers from my lot. In addition to that, their traffic study, I felt, you know, while maybe reflected the times when they took it, six months ago, my plaza was half-empty. they took it, six months ago, my plaza was half-empty. So it doesn't reflect what would have been the true motion of cars coming in and out of our joint entrance, you know. So, you know, any kind of relief I can get to that effect would be greatly appreciated by me and, of course, by the tenants that, you know, occupy the plaza. And that's about it.
Thank you for your comments. Mark Kane.
Oh, he's behind the back, but he's feeling kind of nervous. He was just kind of...
Okay. All right. Well, on what you all spoke about, we don't usually comment, but we just had Committee of the Whole, on which I think you may have been here to speak at that, and we just approved a...an improvement to the drive-through and the kitchen, which is going to increase their throughput and improve the traffic flow over there. So those are measures that are going to help the situation. We don't know exactly what the impact's going to be yet, but it's definitely going to help the situation. So they are making an effort to do that, and we obviously have approved it unanimously through the Planning Commission and also through us. We also have Mary Ann Maylin.
I have an email here that I'd like to hand out. I'm not sure. Should I give it to John to hand out to you, or may I come up and hand it out myself?
George, could you grab the handout from her?
What I'm handing out is I sent a Freedom of Information Act request to the IDPH, and they responded. My request was for evidence of Coke's postulate for the coronavirus related to COVID-19, two, the peer-reviewed double-blind study that isolates the coronavirus related to COVID-19, three, the peer-reviewed double-blind study of the wearing of surgical masks, fabric face coverings, and homemade fabric face coverings to reduce virus infections, especially but not limited to the coronavirus related to COVID-19. They wrote, "The department is unable to identify any records responsive to your request. This information is maintained by the CDC and National Institutes of Health." Now, my question is, I wrote...I forwarded this to my husband, and I have a question for you two related to this. Why does the IDPH even exist if they don't have evidence of this on hand? There...the CDC is not the one that's charging businesses $1,500 for having...for not enforcing the face masks or face coverings in their businesses. It is the IDPH, which was weaponized by our governor in order to enforce this when even the IDPH does not have any proof that it's effective at all. So I did send a CDC request, FOIA request to the CDC, and I sent it two days after I received this request back, so this is February 12th, and they still have not gotten back to me with any response. I'm just telling you what I asked and what I've received. And also, the IDPH should have been asking these questions themselves. They should have evidence on hand themselves because they're the ones who are enforcing this requirement. And also, it's discrimination against me because I have an ADA, I have a mask, I have a face covering exemption. It's not being respected at every corporation within Orland Park or within Illinois, and it should be. And I've had the police called on me for not...for refusing to wear a face covering, and it's none of their business why I'm not wearing a face covering. And also, you know, this discrimination should not stand.
Thirty seconds.
And they should not be allowed...corporations who are disrespecting people with the...with an ADA exemption should not be allowed to do business here in Orland Park or anywhere in Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else here to speak? Board comments. Trustee Fenton.
First of all, I'd like to hope everybody had a great Easter. It was fantastic weather. It was nice that Mother Nature cooperated with the Easter Bunny. I'd also like to remind everybody that this Saturday at the museum from 11 to 12, we are having a presentation of Death of Our President, and it's about Abraham Lincoln. And we also still have our game exhibit that's on, Games from Back in the 1800s. It's a very great exhibit if anybody wants to go there and look at it. Sarah's done a fantastic job. And I'd also like to remind everybody about tomorrow's a very important day. Make sure you vote. If you haven't voted already, make sure you get out there and voice your opinion.
Trustee Dodge.
I'll echo some of Trustee Fenton's comments. Definitely hope everyone had a great weekend. Tomorrow's an important day. Please vote. And that's it.
Trustee Calandrello.
Just echoing everyone else's comments. I hope everyone had a good Easter and good weekend, and polls open 6 to 7 tomorrow, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So go vote.
Trustee Healy.
The other day, I was speaking with a friend of mine, a lady from Indiana, who said that from listening to the radio and TV, she understood that all the coronavirus administrations in Illinois were a nightmare, and she doesn't know how we're getting along with it. Well, I told her I disagree wholeheartedly. My experience with the getting both shots at the Tinley Park Convention Center was a very, very pleasant experience. It was wonderful to see the National Garden at so well organized. And again, you can't believe everything you hear on the radio is another thing I told her. And the, you know, hats off to everybody who's administering these through whatever agency. I think they're doing a great job. Thanks.
Trustee Getzinas.
Thank you. I just wanted to say to Chief Mitchell and the Orland Park Police Department, they did an excellent job with over 70 police vehicles today, showing their respects to a fallen officer that had his service today at the Sheehy Funeral Home, the hometown officer that was killed in line of duty. So they represented Orland Park well. I heard that from another...a number of residents and business owners, and I wanted to thank you for that, Chief, and for the officers that participated in that. Thank you.
Trustee Maloney.
Like everybody else, I hope everybody had a fantastic Easter weekend. It was a beautiful weekend, and hope you're able to spend time with your family and friends. You know, last Tuesday, we held our annual Commissioners Dinner, and, you know, I'd like to take a moment and thank everybody once again for all of our volunteers and our committees, our advisory boards, and our commissions that dedicate their time and effort to the betterment of Orland Park. Their work doesn't go unnoticed, and I thank them dearly for it. I'd also like to thank everyone that made our vaccination delivery site successful last week. I was able to be out there to volunteer for a short time, and it looked like we had a great turnout. I believe we had over 1,200 vaccines. So thank you to everybody that made that possible. And as everybody else has mentioned, you know, tomorrow's Election Day. If you haven't already, get out and vote and make your voice heard. So thank you all for coming and have a great week.
So I'll echo...I hope everyone had a great Easter. I'll also point out it's the end of the first quarter for businesses, and, you know, the report we have from the mall is that they've been doing gangbusters all year, including a couple of very popular stores. I can't name the store specifically, but they're number one in their entire portfolio as far as sales, so they're doing very, very well. And the youth supervision policy has been going off extremely...has been very well received by patrons as well as by the businesses that are in there. So that's gone very well. Also want to thank REC for doing Easter Egg Hunt. That's one of two events we lost last year. And because last year it was, you know, literally a week and a half after the shutdown is when the Easter Egg Hunt was supposed to be. So...or two weeks. So they did a very good job, and there were well over 1,000 kids out there having a good time. So great to see that, and we had good weather as well. And then the vaccination event, I really want to give all of staff, George, your entire staff, did a phenomenal job. First, sourcing vaccines when we know the county and the state have not been willing to source anything for us and get us anything. And the county finally did give us some for our first responders, so we got our first responders and others the day before, which was a nice trial run. And then 1,186 vaccines delivered that day. From...and I was there the whole time, and from what I could tell, it went without a hitch. It was really...I think there were two people that didn't have the right paperwork that came to the recovery room. That was it out of 1,186. It was just extremely well done. Staff did an amazing job. Want to thank Jewel Osko for providing those vaccine doses, and hopefully it goes just as smoothly for the second dose as well. But really a fantastic job getting...and we had extras available. We had to open it up further. So that tells me that our seniors, all the seniors, because we sent out numerous... be numerous methods to get ahold of them. So all of our seniors now have had an opportunity to get a shot because we had shots still available. Same thing with all of our educators that either live here or work here, and then we had to open it up even further than that. So the early groups in Orland Park at least have had, you know, an opportunity now to get their shots. And what was particularly helpful was many of our seniors that couldn't go to places to get shots because they're...they don't have the ability to be mobile and to get transportation, and we used our transportation to go pick them up. And they were...it was the transportation party bus, bringing them back and forth, having a good time all day long. So really, really hats off George's staff, just all the volunteers from staff that worked the event. Just a phenomenal job. Really, I can't compliment you enough for all of that. So thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton.
Move to go into executive session for a, approval of minutes, b, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, or performance, or dismissal of specific village employees, c, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
All right, we're going into executive session.
Trustee Fenton.
Here.
Trustee Dodge.
Here.
Trustee Calandrello.
Here.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Maloney.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton.
Move to approve a settlement between Judith Weber and the Village of Orland Park for $60,000.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, we have to call the roll. I'm sorry. Call the roll.
Mike Amay, this pick.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.